Thank you, thank you everyone for being here today. We're here for the SEDS public hearing. And today is the opportunity to add anything to the SEDS stands for the Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy. And this is going to be for fiscal year 26 to 2030. And all the public is welcome to give their input today. Also, for anybody tuning in that can't make it today, if you can, if you have comments that you'd like to submit regarding this, you can send those to the tribal secretary's office. Before we start, I want to ask our director of Si Changu Resource Development to offer us a prayer.
Welcome to the conference. It's America. Here's your day to conduct business in behalf of the people of the Rosebussu tribe. Give us understanding, knowledge, encourage to present what is in the best interest of the people. Also, let us not forget those who have lost loved ones during this period of time, those who have sickness and illness, those who are incarcerated, and above all, give us courage and fortitude to deal with what is happening in this country in terms of our financial resources and the executive orders that are coming down that we do what is in the best interest of the tribe.
May I take some time to give Director Ken Ladue the floor to discuss what the SEDS document is from the tribe's perspective? So you got the floor, Ken.
This, this, good afternoon. I think this is a, an important facet of what's in the tribe's best interest in planning. I know that what's been played on the radio a lot is just C E D S. And I don't think I've ever heard anybody ask a question, what does C E D S stand for? Well, it stands for Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy, which is basically the roadmap of how the tribe needs to proceed. It is something that in many instances is done on a regular basis. This is a piece of funding that is part of the tribe and a number of years ago, it was conducted by the tribe. And as Redco came into being and was designated as the Economic Development Arm of the Rosebussu tribe, the Rosebussu tribe initiated activities that Redco would operate this grant in behalf of the tribe. So it still continues on that, that basis. And you know, this is something that this plan needs to be developed continuously. Like with any planning document, circumstances and times change and that needs to be addressed. It's also very important because if you're working in the area of economic development and working with the Department of Commerce Economic Development, a lot of the funding that is available or may become available and be awarded to the tribe is based on what this economic development document is. So it is a very important document. And the tribe is continually changing and developing different priorities. And as those changes take place, they need to be incorporated into this document. As there are new emphasis, new sources of funding, it's very important that these, these take place. And you know, that, that's a part of this process is that there is, you know, a public hearing to allow the communities, the general public and the programs in order to present their information, which may be incorporated into this, this plan. So it is something that probably needs to take place on a continual basis. It is covered in this part because it is economic development. The tribe does have an economic development committee that provides recommendation for approval through the entire council. So as, as we proceed and we make our presentations, you know, then it is, it is something that needs to be done. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Ladue. With that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Lapointe.
Thank you, Sheri. My name is Dr. Yopie Yonchadewa Stenapet Chuzapal. My name is Michael Lapointe Marchapi, Chief Economic Development Officer, Si Changu Co. As Ken stated, we've been tasked at Redco to develop this document as required every five years. And, and for the reasons that he stated, where we have to be able to document a lot of what the tribe adopts as priorities with its economic priority, economic development priorities in order to go after a large significant chunk of federal dollars out there. This is important. It's, it's often not understood as, as Ken said, you know, but even just the acronym itself. But really the, because it's done so rarely and not annually, it's every five years. It's, you know, twice every decade, really. Be that as it is, when it's done properly, when it's done with the input of programs, directors and the community and the public at large, it's really a document that allows for what, what we're going to be doing as a tribe, what we've decided our priorities are. You know, Redco may develop this and propose it, but at the end of the day, through the Economic Development Committee passing forward the final form and with goals and objectives in the final form of that document, then ultimately the council adopts it and approves it. So, you know, having said that, some of the background we did, I can say that COVID really threw a lot of, a couple of things off. Number one, data was all over the place with all the different kinds of funding out there, going to households for relief, which was sorely needed here, a lot more investments made into tribal programs. And now come full circle to today where you have what we see going on in DC right now and the impacts it's having and the confusion being created by this funding freeze. So from, from the, the perspective of just whole economic development in general, this is, it, we have to stay focused on something that allows us to get to a place where I believe we, a lot of us believe, and I think a lot of folks here would believe that we are more self-reliant, whether it's our home-based entrepreneurs or a place where you can go to work, you know, and whether it's outside of a government-based sector, the tribe, IHS, BIA, the school districts, and have a job where you could actually be able to provide for your family and pay for your home and your needs as a family and not be reliant, you know, so much on, on government assistance or suffering through poverty. And so it's with that that we, we know, we have a lot of data on what we need. But what we really need now with this draft document is more input here from our tribal entities and the public at large. So I'm really glad, Sheri, that we're having this and doing this today because it's, it's the one thing you, we have to make sure we incorporate those different perspectives and goals and objectives and try to bring them down to a common goal, if, if at all possible to where, you know, or we can be able to tell not only your committee at Economic Development, but the tribal council that, hey, this is, this has had its input. We, we know what's important and it's reflected in the document and we're going to work towards it. And here's how, you know, we may not have the money for it right now or the resources, the human capital for it, the staff, but we're going to work to that spot. So what, the way this was drafted, I'll, I'll start by saying that a year and a half ago, a group called Partners in Performance came in. And they provided Redco a really high-end analysis of what economic development projects we should prioritize. And when they did that, it was really the first time someone ever asked me for my data. As an economist, I have a lot of heavy data and every, pretty much all the economic output for not just all of Todd, Mallette, Tripp and Gregory County, but the entire state. If they, when I talk about economic data, I'm talking about industry output, sales for, you know, all 536 sectors of the economy within the North American Classification Code System, called NAICS codes back in the day. And, and it's with that, what it allowed me to do was share with them what, what our output was by sector. Here, 52% of our economy is, is, it's government-based. What, what's really, the one statistic that really stands out for me is $500 million a few years ago would go out to buy goods and services away from here, from all federal, state, local, tribal entities. And people leaving $125 million in personal wages and paychecks. Basically, just under 70% of that leaving and, and when it should stay here with 11,510 unemployed adults between the ages of 18 and 64 and an unemployment rate of 74%, just under 3,000 people working. We, we have a lot of needs continually. Todd County is the poorest county in America. When you look at Forbes Magazine's rankings of the poorest, top 10 poorest counties in the US. And we don't have to go over a lot of the problems that come from poverty, the health statistics, type 2 diabetes, cancer, everything. You know, our, our health disparities, we don't, we don't need to go through those, but we know that poverty, there's a direct correlation with that and people need opportunity and hope. And, and that's where the development of the, of the economy comes into play. And so when Partners in Performance, the acronym I'll use with them is PIP, I'll refer to them as PIP, came in, they looked at all the data that I had. They looked at all the, the analysis we did. And I'd figured out probably about a year before they came that we could create 11,510 jobs through about 11 different sectors, give us to full employment where, where adults had jobs here. And when they looked at that, they basically analyzed and said, there's three of them here that are the low-hanging fruit. And that low-hanging fruit basically means the, one of the industries where your barriers to entry to get started aren't that high. You're already in that business or you can easily start that business. And so the human capital and the financial capital, the, the barriers to entry aren't as significant. And you could get these started a lot easier than you can on the other eight, which are like, you know, pharmaceutical, banking, financial services. And they were, you know, they were just, they were just too hard to get into right now because they, they, we don't have what we need to get started in those industries. And so those first three, the first one was the bison production. Because we already had the largest bison herd in North America native-owned, PIP recommended and after some heavy analysis that our land and we're not using it enough for our own production purposes to feed our own people, they said, stay away from some, from, from staple crop, commodity crops, soybeans, corn, wheat. There's not enough margins in that. You're not going to make a whole lot of return on investment. But where you are, it's going to be in bison, where you get paid almost twice as much per pound versus cattle. And if you can get your herd up to 5,800 and start to harvest some of that for your own needs to feed your own people, to use those items for religious, spiritual, cultural purposes, and then start to export and sell to markets that are willing and able to pay that premium dollar versus cattle and anything, and much more beyond anything for, that's crop-related. All right. So that was one recommendation that they put together. The second one was the construction side. They said, you already have RCI, Rosebud Construction Incorporated. And you, what's not happening enough with RCI is that there's not enough of utilizing the 8A status, the Buy Indian Act status, all the federal preference that could be gained through that entity to gain work in, in other markets within South Dakota. And what was recommended after looking at the entire state was that Pennington County, the Rapid City area was more ripe for RCI to expand and capture more commercial projects. All right. So that was the second recommendation and a number of jobs that go along with it. The third and final was wind energy to capture the wind above. As you all know, we're not wealthy like our cousins to the east in Shakopee where we have a huge gaming market, gain a billion dollars in revenue, you know, and, and even afford to pay out dividends to your own tribal members every, every year at the year end. We don't have the east, west coast markets. We certainly, you know, there's, while others may have natural gas and other energy sources they can get from the ground and other parts. What, what we did have after the analyze was wind, a lot of it. And we know that's already here. There's a lot of it. But there was no way to really capture it and get it to market. And if we could overcome that hurdle, that's a significant revenue maker, about two-thirds of a billion dollars over a 20-year period for RST or any RST entity. So there's not a lot of jobs in it other than the construction side. But wind energy represents a significant infusion of capital. Once you get that energy to market and, and get it to the places that need it most, and it's cleaner than all the other, including nuclear power, which has a lot of NIMBY, not my backyard syndrome associated with it. So 3,020 jobs were identified. It wouldn't take care of 11,510 that were needed. But with what we drafted on our end, Redco was this first piece that focused on that. And the reason why we did that was we waited for them to get done with this analysis so that we could put it within the SEDS document. And you should have that draft from the secretary's office now, the 43-pager. And so a lot of what you see there is the analysis that we brought before tribal council a year and a half ago. And said, this, this is what we have. It's a 10-year roadmap. It allow, it's, it's meant to get our GDP increased by over a billion dollars, which all that really means is wages, sales of businesses and taxes and value added, which is, is basically our profits and the taxes we generate within. So it, it puts a big chunk into the unemployment rate if we're able to carry it out. It highlights the next steps and the things that have to happen. PIP consults Fortune 500 companies. They, they did it at no cost. They did it pro bono for Redco. They selected us as the one tribe they were willing to work with and, and do it pro bono. And we were pretty fortunate to have that high-level analysis from them to put forth the plan that ultimately becomes a 10-year roadmap for the Rosebussu tribe. So it's not the, the only sets of items, those three pillars, they call them within the document. Three pillars, again, wind energy, bison and construction. There are other pieces that, that can and should. And for the purposes of the SEDS document today, we need more input from within the community, especially Si Changu Resource Management. We know we need more tourism. The projects that Ken has need to be incorporated. Some opportunities that exist to go after funding, the federal government, or even some foundations want to see the plan and see the goal that you're trying to get funding for listed within this document. So it's important that it get put in during the next 30 days here. That's a little bit how the background in a nutshell, how this came to be. There's, there's a lot there. The biggest, probably the discrepancy I see with it is the data part on population. The Census Bureau has us dropping population. We tried to get RST ARPA data about two and a half years ago. We're unsuccessful in getting that data and we are looking, we believed it would have been more accurate because of the disbursements made during COVID and the assistance that was provided by the tribe, that by, by community or zip code, it would have, and even by household, I think we thought we could have a much more accurate picture of the people we're trying to serve here and incorporate into the document. So that's one piece that's missing. Where we could really use this thing to get an improvement on, improvement on is, is the population side. Because we know we just don't have, you know, 9,000 and 1,000 people here, or maybe we do, and I just don't know. And the ARPA data reflects that. But our enrollment office has us over at 30,000 with the most recent report that I got from Caroline's office. So where we're at today is, is that this is a fluid document. We need more input from folks today. And, and I will make sure that that gets typed in, incorporated. I'll ask for SRM's help to approach some of our other local entities that, and really even here today, who else we could outreach, reach out to. We, we did a lot of, in our last SEDS document that was adopted by the tribe. I would say that about 95% of it was complete. And the only thing that wasn't done off the goals and objectives that from what I could see was the tourism aspect of it. We just never got anything tourism, you know, in terms of a big project that, that done or completed in a way that I think it was being envisioned back when, you know, when they were putting that together, the last go-around here. So we want to make sure that what we do put in, that it's actually something that, number one, we have the people, an entity who will do it and the resources they're going to need to do it and start to work towards that and make sure they have those items so that we can, you know, check that off at the end of the five-year period. So that's how we compiled what you have in front of you and where it's at. And it's certainly not final form. It's not its perfected form. And, and we need to make some, get some more data and more goals and objectives included today. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Thank you for that. At this time, I'll open up the floor to anybody who wants to speak to this document. At this time, I'll open up the floor to anybody who wants to speak to this document. This, I always try to express that this document isn't a complete document, that we're trying to push on anybody. It's open for comments, suggestions, and if there's something that we forgot, then please speak to that. For me, reading it, the one thing that I do feel we need to include is our broadband project. We need to make sure that that's included in the, within the this plan, as far as a viable business or ISP, once we get our broadband project up and going, or the technology section also. Does anybody want to add anything?
I've got concerns that CPA was not aware of this open forum. I presented the old copy that you had to them, gave them a chance to come down here today, and they chose me to show up. The thing that they were adamant about against is the study, or comprehensive study done on each communities, and which areas of economic development could be achieved in each one. Other, like he was stating, areas to find funding. I would, since we can operate on our own as communities, and go outside and fund make businesses, and make contacts, and work with the federal government and stuff, that we would need a lot of help in that area. Who would we have to contact to get that information, and how to go about doing it correctly, instead of starting something and get to the door and have it closed off? I know we work a lot of entities out there that are nonprofit to gather or put together things for our communities. I hate to say it, but you know, we're, we're looking at a time coming here near future that food is going to be a major essential item that we need to start looking at. I had started a community garden that operated, well, a community operated for three years, and we always produce more than what we could utilize. So we farm that out to people. What kind of shut us down there was not only our own people taking advantage of it, but turning around and taking that produce to sell. So that was one of the reasons we shut it down. But again, if they had a controlled environment to do something like that, that would be great. So each community should be looked at becoming self-sufficient, so that the tribe don't have, the tribe doesn't have to worry about that burden anymore. I know it's not going to happen overnight, but it's something that people need to plan, so that eventually those people won't feel left out. Because I know you're, you're looking at developing all these jobs, but then you're looking at specific areas, wind energy, solar energy, thermal energy, that's all fine and dandy, but then again, you've got people in CPA that bring up what's the pros, what's the cons. Is it going to harm Mother Earth? And they're pretty adamant about it. If you're going to put something together and put it out there for job's sake, look at the overall picture on what damage it could do, and what benefits it could produce if it were run properly. Another portion that they had mentioned to me was, they had ideas too, for their own communities, and how to get started. So maybe getting somebody to go to those communities, or to the chairman, and giving them and going to those individuals with these ideas. A lot of them are pretty good. One guy that I talked to many years ago up there, I believe Spring Creek, I said, you guys got all the pine cones and big trees up there. I said, you know, you can sell those pine cones if you clean them up, pull the seeds up, bag them up, and sell them. People will buy them. Take the seeds, turn them into plants, more trees, you can sell those back to the federal government. It was just an idea I gave him. So he took one of the pine cones, and he followed my instructions on how to clean it up, use the seeds, thirty trees off of one pine cone. So yeah.
Awesome.
But again, that's just an idea. There's resources within the community that can be utilized to generate funds, not only for that community, but for the people and the tribe itself. I was out hunting in the forest here a couple of years back, and stumbled across ginger root growing wild on this hillside. And then a couple of months after that, I was watching TV, and they were selling that ginger root, and the price they were paying per pound was enormous. So if we got it growing wild out here, and we, we can utilize it, keep it reproducing, well, that's another area you can look at. Something that's already here, that we can put to use without causing any type of damage to Mother Earth is basically what you're talking about. You know, a hog farm, back in our day, was a crisis. The jobs that were guaranteed never did evolve. Still an ongoing issue with me and my community on cleanup, putting it back the way it's supposed to be. Yeah, sore spot with us. So if you develop entities, make sure you have the consent of the communities, where you're going to put them, and opening it up to other communities as well. Because when you start putting something in one place, everybody says that belongs to that community. Well, that's not right, as far as I'm concerned. Belongs to everybody, and they put it there for a reason. Again, look at that aspect of it. Another one, I was coming through your brochure, there's a TLE, I see you're partners with them. Looking at Black County, where Swift Bear is located, they ought to be looking at acquiring enough land to put that back in reservation, as a whole, not just bits and pieces, although then the state might be more willing to work, because you'd be taking a big chunk of their tax money. But yeah, there's other areas and resources out there. And geothermal, for me, would be a good start for our community. We have three artesian wells that produce steam when it, when it comes out of the ground. I know they use it at our old folks' home to heat the facility, but I had a partner of mine come down, look at that, measured the temperature, pressure is pushing out. He said, you know, you could heat your whole community with that. You could run a pipe all the way over to our housing area, heat your houses. And not only that, he went so far as to look into generating electric power. And he said, you could probably run three to five generators off that steam, produce enough energy to run your whole community, the city of White River, the county of Molette, and probably beyond. And that's just off of one well. We'd have three in our community. So that would be an easy go. Another thing that, back in my mind when I was on council, I tried to have the tribe acquire the power plant that was there on the Little White, just to go to the city. It was privately owned at that time, and it was up for sale. And the then-chairman and his relatives went together and bought that. But with that, they acquired the rights to the river, all the way to the, where it comes out of the ground, and the water rights to it all the way down to the Gulf. If the tribe could look at getting in a partnership with him on that, you would have unlimited resources to get rid of your electric energy. Two cherry todd, which they would have to buy, because that's in that grandfather clause. So you could put solar energy into it, you could put wind energy into it, you could put steam-generated energy into it, without cherry tads having to say, oh, true bless you, you know, you buy it. And you could probably set your own rate, as long as it's not ridiculous, and the outcome would be detrimental to the tribe and the users as well. But yeah, you could look at those ideas too, just some of the things I had worked on. I did a plan for Charlie Cologne, and he's long gone, did a study on it, and getting it rebuilt. It is a historical site in the state of South Dakota. It is over a hundred years old now. So it can be a hundred percent federally funded to rebuild it to its original standards. And then after that, you could do, like I said, you will add all these other electrical resources that the tribe may develop, and add them to that company, and put it into Cherry Todd's lap. Might wind up owning Cherry Todd, but it's an idea.
Great feedback.
Right. That's all I have for Swift Bear, and I gave you the consent for CPA, so.
Okay. So just for the record and for clarification, as far as the CPA and Swift Bear, you would like to make sure that this document is presented to the community, has community presentations, community feedback, and that it includes any pros and cons regarding green energy. Your suggestions from Swift Bear are that we need to leverage our natural resources as an economic source. Also, food sovereignty initiatives need to include the communities. You'd like a SWOT analysis done, so we could see which businesses will be viable in each community, and solar, wind, and steam energy possibilities. Mr. Becker?
You know, we always talk about food sovereignty, and I feel like we think about it on such a small scale, and we need to think about it on a larger scale, and it would be amazing if we could eventually get to the point where we open up old trade, old, old trades and start trading from tribe to tribe. I think that'd be something that would be really beneficial for us, not just us as a tribe, but like all tribal nations, to open up those old trade routes and do food sovereignty on a large scale.
I wonder if we should include the tribe, it was one hundred homes project, but now it's like fifteen. I wonder if we should include that.
It would be important to pay, I'm still so much, I'm going to go on with this, if your heads actually come through with the state to record your loans. Yeah. That ties back. Thanks.
I have, what I'm handing out is a number of different surveys and different things, but I'll provide those into records or there. And I'll, I'll start with the, the first one is, would be the tribal, was developed for the fiscal year twenty twenty-seven, the tribal budget formulation, which is the DIA, Department of Interior process. And information was gathered, developing what the tribe's priorities would be with that information. The top category priorities that were presented were, number one, public safety and justice; number two, economic development; number three, strengthening tribal communities; four, construction; five, education; six, resource management, construction; seven, trust natural resource management; eight, trust land and water rights management. And within these categories, there were a number of other different items that came to light, or as priorities, and that is strengthening tribal communities. The highest priority into that area was road maintenance. Other key priorities were housing, social services, welfare assistance, Indian child welfare. In a trust natural resources management area, the highest priority was keeping track of our natural resources and developing what is possible in those areas. The key, other key items in those areas were probate, water rights negotiations, environmental quality projects. Public safety and justice, the highest priorities was facilities, operations, and maintenance. Other key priorities were criminal investigations and police services, detention and corrections, and tribal courts. Economic development, the highest priorities were economic development projects. Other key priorities were general economic development, energy and mineral, minerals programs. Resource management, construction, the highest priority was safety of dams. Key priorities were engineering, supervision, survey, and design of projects. Some of the additional notes in that area, the tribe opted not to rank in the programs area of education and construction activities. And keeping in mind that, you know, this is some of the projects that are operating under the six to eight area. Education, a lot of activities in that area fall under the Bureau of Indian Education, which funds St. Francis Indian School, and also is involved with St. DeKalb Shaghi University. So those, those were ranking that, that could take place in those areas in terms of what, you know, what their priorities were. There are a number of different activities that take place in those areas. They indicated that the budget formulation and priority setting process should start earlier in the fiscal year. And within the federal process, you're not looking at the current year or the coming year, but you're looking at formulating budgets that are two years in the future. And this is something that is done by the tribe on a regular basis. The ranking tool that, you also have that provided with, within that information, they found that the ranking tool was easy to use, but suggested other training and a better participation, because this is something that, that is, takes place every, every year. And it's something that, you know, we try to incorporate within the tribe as terms of its, its budget formulation as they go through each fiscal year. The other document that we provided was the Rosewood Sioux Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy, is in terms of, you know, what SRD is, has presented and thinks is important to incorporate into this plan. The Rosewood Sioux Tribe seeks to develop a comprehensive economic development strategy that aligns with identified priorities and leverages economic development activities to support cultural and language revitalization, cultural and natural resource preservation, small business growth, and community viability. This strategy integrates multiple initiatives, including the development of infrastructure development, small business support, and cultural heritage tourism. This process is hoped to create a sustainable and self- This process is hoped to create a sustainable and self-sufficient tribal economy that honors and revitalize cultural heritage of the Rosebud Sioux tribe, supports entrepreneurial endeavors, and fosters community resilience through a strategic infrastructure investment. That is that we have to improve the conditions in that we live because that will foster some of the development. The strategic goals and initiatives in the small business development and entrepreneurial support. The objective is to support the development of small businesses across the reservation to foster economic independence and job creation. Develop an entrepreneurial micro grant program that offers funding up to twenty-five-hundred for participants completing cultural heritage tour guide and entrepreneurship training programs. Strengthen partnership with St. Degulashka's Entrepreneurial Center to expand services and resources available to tribal entrepreneurs. Enhance access to capital programs through partnership with financial institutions and to establish a tribal credit fund. Offer business development workshops focused on financial literacy, marketing, e-commerce, and legal business structures. Encourage tribal member-owned businesses through preferential contracting and procurement policies. Development of cultural heritage tourism. And our objective is to utilize cultural heritage tourism as a tool for cultural and language revitalization while promoting economic sustainability and job creation. Develop a cultural heritage tour guide certification programs to train tribal, try, to train tribal members in cultural storytelling and tourism management. Establish cultural tourism centers that serve as hubs for cultural education, visitor engagement, and retail opportunities for local artisans. Create an online cultural tourism platform to market and book heritage tours, cultural experience, and tribal loan lodging and hospitality services. Promote sustainable ecotourism activities that highlight the Rosebud Sioux tribe's natural resources while ensuring environmental preservation. Integrate Lakota language immersion into tourism experiences to reinforce language preservation efforts. Community viability and infrastructure development. To improve community vi- viability by revitalizing the infrastructure, removing blight, creating spaces for new housing and business development. Items and areas demolish old and dilapidated houses and buildings to clear space for new development projects. Develop a housing and business infrastructure plan that outlines strategic areas for residential and commercial development. Establish affordable housing initiatives to provide quality housing for tribal members, reducing homelessness and overcrowding. Expand utilities and infrastructures to support business development and improve accessibility to commercial areas. Encourage green building practices into the new construction projects to promote sustainability and environmental responsibility. Develop and construct a social, a Si'chango youth center to foster youth leadership capacity and to support economic development activities surrounding youth sports events. Develop and construct a tribal multipurpose community building for wakes, funerals, entrepreneurship training, pop-up art markets, and other community events. Implementation and partnerships. Successful implementation of this strategy requires collaboration with tribal entities, federal and state partners, private sector stakeholders, and key partnerships, which would include the Bureau of Indian Affairs for funding some of the infrastructure and economic development projects. South Dakota Native Tourism Alliance to strengthen the tribal tourism industry. St. Degulashka University Entrepreneurial Centers for training and business support. Tribal Housing Authority and HUD development programs to support housing development initiatives. Private sector and nonprofit organizations to access funding and expertise for small business growth. Some of the performance metrics and evaluations that need to be in place to measure the success of this strategy and to follow the key performance indicators will be tr- how they will be tracked. Growth in small business startups and tribal owned enterprises, the number of certified cultural heritage, heritage tour guides, improvements in community infrastructure and public services. Increase in tourism resi- revenue and visitor numbers, square footage of blighted properties to be redeveloped, increase in housing units developed, completion and utilization of the Si'chango Youth Center, completion and utilization of the tribal multipurpose community buildings. In conclusion, it is hoped that this comprehensive strategy represents a holistic approach to improving the economic, cultural, and social well-being of the Rosebud Sioux tribe by leveraging cultural resource tourism, supporting small business development, and revitalizing community interest, infrastructure. The tribe hopes this will create a thriving and sustainable economy that will preserve its heritage and foster long-term prosperity.
Thank you, Ken. That was really good. Appreciate all of that.
So I think this, in conjunction with the development of the SEDS and incorporating this, a lot of this information is basically what's coming from the grassroots area, program directors and other interested individuals in putting forth what they consider to be important elements of what should go into tribal development.
One thing I left out of there that I would like to add, um, is the development of a artisan cooperative that serves our tribal artisans, um, in the form of like having a space for them to create. Some of them live in overcrowded housing, um, to create like the artisan studio space for them to go and create, also to, um, provide, um, supplies and materials at wholesale costs, um, and then a marketplace for them. So I just feel that's something that, um, already existed that fizzled out and would like to see that, um, come back to life, support our artisans.
That sounds like that's a lot in line with the, um, Innovation Center idea.
Yep.
Yeah, it does. Sounds like it runs along the terms, but the Innovation Center is, I don't know how far out that is, because it's.
Five years.
About five years out. That could be something that we start small and then when, when and if we ever get the Innovation Center, it'd be good.
Well, Sarah mentioned, you know, it had existed before, but it was known as the Brewless Sioux Arts and Crafts Cooperative, but it was a two-hundred-member cooperative that was run that, it was established at St. Francis, who was part of St. Francis Mission. It supplied the university or the museum crafts and other items there and was involved in a lot of the tourism activities within St. Francis Mission. And with that many members, it was a massive production area, but done on an individual basis in developing those entrepreneurs. And a lot of them are still, to this day, continuing to be involved in a production of crafts and, and the past being marketed off the reservation. The reason I'm familiar with that is I was a director of the Brewless Sioux Arts and Crafts.
I remember that.
You know, that was, and it was e- even involved with the St. Francis Indian School because some of the schools, uh, students there would come over and serve internships to learn about how, how to run a craft business and what was involved. Because it's, it's, you know, not only the business aspects of what goes into the development of the business activity, but also the cultural preservation of how these crafts are important to the people. And, you know, it, it was very extensive and, you know, that it was an official, recognized arts and crafts cooperative.
We've gotten a huge, um, of feedback from our community members and preliminary tourism outreach that we've done. Um, we, we know that we have a lot of artisans residing in every community across this reservation, and, um, they all need resources, they all need that support. Um, and, I mean, like, they want it, they really, and I also know some artisans who are looking at some different types of businesses, like actually printing the textiles and fabrics and things like that. So there's some really great ideas out there, um, that will be bubbling up over the summer, hopefully, so we hope to get, capture more information on what their needs are over the summer.
Appreciate that, Sarah and Ken. Is there, do you know of any consultants slash advisors, uh, people that could, if they were procured and hired, could help with the development of a strategy? Uh, for, for something like that? Because you talked about that now, Ken, the brew, really, the arts and crafts operation at St. Francis years ago, just a kid, and I remember that, that was big, that was huge. That was a significant operation, and I remember, I didn't, I think there were calendars that were put out, I think, you know, it was just a lot with that. And I remember people would kind of go out of their way to, um, if he made, if he knew how to make something or he wanted to buy something, that's where you went. And so it was, but, but that's one thing that I'm curious is to, where we could get more, uh, how we approach that. I mean, it's one thing to get it put in the SEDS documents, a whole nother to have the right people to make something happen, you know, to, to do the pre-development activities. Have you thought about who could do pre-development activities? Is that in-house at SRM already, or is that something that has to be procured out?
That would be something with Ken's expertise that I feel like we could, we could do in-house. But it's just, um, yeah, got to focus on.
Yeah, you got a lot on your plate like the rest of us.
Yeah.
It, it, it's, you know, the cooperative was one of a kind that was involved in it, you know, and I think the initial funding for that activity was provided by the Campaign for Human Development, which is a church-related foundation that did that. And then it, it moved to a point of being self-sufficient, of, you know, the sale of the crafts and, you know, that, that provided for the operation facility. And then the support of St. Francis Mission, you know, the calendars was something that was part of the museum and the mission in terms of their, their fundraising activities. Because I, I, I went from Brewless Sioux Arts and Crafts to being a director of, uh, Little Sioux, which was a fundraising arm of St. Francis Mission. So there, there was a, so there was a lot of collaboration and development in those areas and, you know, they, they have the museum and the church and, you know, those activities in those areas. You know, I, I graduated from St. Francis Mission, so I'm very familiar with, you know, the mission and forty schools. But it, it is something that, you know, the cooperative is owned by the people and the support of the people. Okay? Having two-hundred members, you know, is a very significant number of people. And I think, uh, during those periods of time, there's a lot of collaboration between not only the Si'chango craft people, but, uh, Oglala craft people. So there was, you know, a lot of crafts, you know, and it's, it's main activity that, you know, and I still carry that on is the development of the porcupine coalwork. So not only do you have to be knowledgeable about, you know, how the crafts are produced, but some of the cultural history of what, what goes into those, those activities. So it is, it is an important facet of our people here, and it's part of, you know, how we carry on and continue on as people.
Ken, so much, and Sarah, you, you know, that it's one thing to get an operation up and going and started, it's a whole nother to keep it going and continuing. And there's always challenges, usually when people leave or pass on, uh, the, an entity usually kind of goes away with them eventually. So what, what happened to the cooperative? And is it still exists legally, or is it just a matter of?
I think it just kind of faded out. I think, uh, I, I moved on to Little, Little Sioux and had activities there and they hired other people. But one of the big events that happened that was very detrimental to that is the fire at St. Francis.
Oh, okay.
It, uh, you know, so some of the facilities are no longer there, you know, if you look. So that's, a lot of it is having a base to operate out of.
So a lot of the physical space was an impediment, nowhere to go for the artisans.
The artisans are still around now, that the artisans for that period of time, you know, it would be the grammars of the, the current, some of the people that I deal with at the present time. So you have multiple, multiple generational activities, and a lot of that, that activities is still ongoing.
Okay.
It's not, it's not coordinated, you know, in any, any capacity, so that's something, something that's.
As far as space goals for something like that, because it's been on, um, one of our, our lists to focus on, but we realize that we need to do a lot more community engagement on this initiative to kind of really figure out who the key community partners could be. You know, I hope that some of our community, people who live in our communities will bubble up to the top and be leaders and, and everything over this artisan cooperative. But early on, um, when the tribe had the ARPA money, we submitted a proposal using the Red Log Building as a Si'chango Cultural Center. Um, and it was modeled, kind of, I was getting input back from the Oglala Lakota Art Space. And, um, there's funding available through like the First People's Fund, National Endowment for the Arts and Humanities, um, for this type of stuff, but not for the construction side of it. So the Red Log Building was going to be, the downstairs space was going to be gutted out, kind of, and it was going to be, um, artisan creation space. Like if you go to Oglala Lakota Art Space, they have studios in there that their artisans can go in, sign in, and they can work out of there in quiet, whatever. Um, they can create all their art for selling, and then upstairs of the, um, Red Log Building would have been a digital museum. Because we knew that the condition of that building, we couldn't really safely house artifacts and things like that there. So it would have to be like the digital museum, and the upstairs would also double as a gift shop. So everything that the artisans here create will be available at a gift shop here locally for visitors driving through, but they would also be available online. So that was a strategy that we had developed early on, but it wasn't funded, and so, um, but that plan still exists.
Still waited.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, um, we have made some attempts at some development of, um, critical infrastructure that would support some of this, but it's just, we didn't see none of the development at first, so.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, Sarah and Ken.
Russell wants.
Oh, Russell. Hi, Russell.
Hey, look, I hear you. I'm sure I can picture you a little. I was really, uh, just hearing you talk about the Red Log Building. You know, we've been originally, that was built to house arts and crafts. Uh, when it was built, leadership moved in and it turned it into a travel base. But I think we need to go to that, back to that concept of trying to rebuild that log building and housing. You know, I used to work for tribal sports reservation office. We have so many thousands of artifacts out there that belong to the Rosebud Sioux tribe, but we don't have a place for them. We, we need to establish a place for bringing our cultural items back to, back to the home country. So that's something that, uh, it's always, uh, in back of my mind, it's always been an issue with me. You know, we, we tried funding, you know, funding, though, uh, years back, uh, we did a research on, on building itself at that time, it would have cost us maybe two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars to rebuild it. But now it's probably doubled that.
The budget I had presented to have it completely done, it would have had a parking, a new parking space and everything, um, new sidewalks for access. That was a six million dollar. um, new sidewalks for access, that was a six million dollar project.
Well, if we can get it, that'd be awesome. But that's the thing, you know, sometimes we forget about cultural resources. And that we need to really showcase some of our artifacts that are out there for our young people, our next generation coming. Because we are getting lost in our cultural identity. You know, as it is, we're at a time where we're losing our language, uh, we're losing our virtues, the other, uh, and so we need to bring that back to life within our, then you can do all these things. We need to re-educate our people on our cultural identity. And I think that's really important, you know, and I, I'm hoping that, uh, in the next five years, we could accomplish something in between, you know. And I, I think that we really need to K N on that, you know. And even, I was looking at the London Act or Land Resources about protecting rights for our people. You know, today, Jayden was talking about farming, you know. Originally, they could have found these reservations to farm all this land and, and maintain it and enjoy the fruits of it, but it, it's not working. You know, we, we set up these small co-op and it's just not generating. We're gonna come to a time where we're gonna have to rely on how our grandfathers and grandmothers lived. You know, we lived off the land and wild animal, uh, we chopped wood, we made sure we're ready for winter. Those things were instilled in us and we still have that opportunity. And the resources here within our boundaries, not only our tribal boundaries, but also our treaty boundaries, those things we can implement. So there's many things that, you know, we need to look at. Today, you know, we're, our people are in panic because we have a new tribal president, United States President, and he's really implementing some things on us and, and a causal reaction. And we shouldn't fear, we shouldn't fear those kind of things because we do have all the resources. We may have to tighten our belts here, uh, within our tribe, but still, you know, we need to reach out to our people and, and calm them down because, you know, things can get worse. We just need to be prepared for it. So I, I was just listening on the radio, uh, coming in and, and, uh, I heard fifty homes mentioned. That was the kind of a read that we had to put out a few years back. We had the resources, we had the opportunity when Kerzak came in and ARPA came in. And now I go out and visit some of our people, the living conditions are not good at all. And some of these small homes can really benefit our peoples. And so I, I, I really strongly recommend that we still maintain on track with that. Originally, we sit a hundred homes, but now I just down to fifty. But it can be done and we can even build them here, Rosebud. Our own people can build them. So those things are, are really possible. So I, I just wanted to throw my two cents in here and, and hold that fear down among our people. You know, there's things that we can do and still working on, as you guys are. So it's not, uh, not a lost cause, you know. Need to settle our people down, take that fear away. Still a resilient people. Somebody said that since fourteen ninety-two, we've been in existence. Here we have a big scare and with a new president and all bumping into each other, how we're gonna survive? And I, I think we need to calm our people down. So I just wanted to throw that my two cents in here, while, while you guys are doing this. I am pretty concerned about our cultural identity and our cultural resource. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Russell. I apologize for walking around giving everyone sign down while we're talking. I don't want you to feel like I'm being disrespectful.
I know you're here.
Okay, I just didn't want, I, and no one's listening. Um, and I, I wanted to, you know, thank Russell because of, when was that? About three months ago when we had something repatriated?
Oh, yeah, uh, headdress.
Yeah, so about three months ago, we had some headdresses that were repatriated to us. And, you know, had a place to store them, so I'm really glad you mentioned the cultural center there. Um, Mike, I wanted to mention something else. At my community meeting, um, this past month, I had a tribal member who really wanted to, um, be here. Um, he wanted to express his, uh, interest in the tribe, the tribal, in the communities, with hemp, hemp, growing hemp. I know we have a hemp commission and we have a specific amount of licenses, but, um, he really wanted to start like an organization, use one of the, all the communities as one entity to start something, so I think, but.
Is somebody behind you, Sharon?
Oh, there's somebody.
I would like to say a few words.
Can you get you something?
Uh, right, actually.
If you guys can sit at the table, who you got to sit in?
Don't argue, man. I, you guys are talking about community development and arts and craft.
Yes.
Well, some arts and craft, I mean, who's, uh, arrow-headed, non-arts, self-test, they haven't done it. But, uh, this hemp stuff too. Uh, back in, uh, ninety-six, I had plans, probably, or whenever they started hemp, the, up in Colorado. Probably, I'm glad that started. It was making plans to do it, started then. And I don't know what happened to Council of Indians and they kept delaying, delaying, and you just forgot about it. But our plan back then was to, uh, you said, I can fund you guys. I can build greenhouses for you guys for landowners to grow hemp and provide security. And he said, for the first, uh, six months, we take your profits for payment. And after that, it's theirs. So I said, that's a good deal. He said, uh, and you can have, uh, medical marijuana, but according to the IHS rules and guidelines, it says we're allowed medicinal medicine. As natives, we're allowed medicinal, you know, uh, what do you call it, homeopathic medicines? So hemp was in it, marijuana was in it. He said, you can get IHS to pay for it while you're a member for, uh, a medical marijuana. Then I, nothing, no money could come out of the pocket because IHS wasn't covered that. Then we had those plans back then, but I don't know where they went. And one of it was to, uh, 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 create growers and they were gonna fund it for landowners, so the landowners will have some sort of subsistence from their land and be able to take part in those businesses. And the reason we was gonna do that was the Rosebud Sioux Tribe has a treaty with the United States that says we can make our own laws. I mean, we don't have to agree with whatever the federal government says. We can make our own laws. We can dis, uh, lead, we can legalize marijuana. And they did that in, uh, Colorado. So why can't we do that here? We're so caught in this exterior control of everybody else that we can't even run our own country, our own land. You know, and that growers, that would have been a big plus for, for, for them to be able to grow hemp. And we got an airport, so we, we don't have to use roads to transport it. They transport medical, uh, you know, our bonds and all that, medical stuff by air. Why can't we, uh, transport our product by air too? You know, all these camps are in set and, uh, I don't know what happened to them. But I see you guys talking about it today. So maybe if you guys can find out, then we'll know that we talked about it back in ninety-six, um, or something. But, uh, cultural resource stuff, we got a lot of things that were extant. Like the Smithsonian. Smithsonian took a lot of stuff. There was a cave up above Buffalo, up above Rapid City. And it was a cave that said that, that's where we, we originally, originally crawled out of, I guess. But it's a big rock and it had lightings, even a way up on the seams. Smithsonian came and scraped all that lightings and stuff off, took it to, uh, New York or wherever, put it downstairs, they had it in storage for a long time. I don't know what they done with it now, but it has a history of our tribes. You know, you guys should look into stuff like that. And if there's a blend, it's Smithsonian there.
I know there's some openings up there we just went to. We took a group of, um, people up to Win Cave this summer. And, um, the park ranger there, you know, they showed the opening there. Um, they told us at that park that, over the summer, that they recently discovered another opening to Win Cave. But in this opening, they had found a camel, cat remains of a camel and some other weird, I can't remember, some other weird animal. But the park ranger told us that, but they didn't wanna tell us where it was. And we're a bunch of natives, like, where is it? What is it? But they wouldn't tell us. But, uh, the park people actually told us they discovered another opening, um, to Win Cave. So I was wondering how many other openings are there up there? You know what I mean? And so, I mean, just kinda got.
Wait, I don't know those. Only you told me those were in town.
In the old story, you said there were seven openings in here.
Seven?
Yes.
That's awesome.
Yeah, I'm coming, you're welcome. All right, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. And I just wanted to let you know that, um, the council did, um, um, pass a law making medical marijuana legal on the reservation, you just have to have a medical, um, card.
And IHS can pay it.
Oh, what do you mean, pay for?
Uh, they have a law in IHS that natives are entitled to home, home path medicines, which is herbs and deep back medicine that you use. Uh, and part of it's marijuana. Yeah, it's in the law.
Uh, who else needs a copy of this? No, I didn't, I didn't. Thank you. I'm just reading, I'm not.
Just go.
Okay, well, yeah. Forty-three, we just. That one has forty-three. Okay. Yeah. Oh, no. Right, so that's forty-three? Oh, yes, okay.
Um, next for the floor is, um, Cecilia? I always have to think about her real name. I wrote my. Hi, good afternoon. So I've been with the tribe for twenty years and I've worked in a lot of different agencies. And, um, I guess throughout my career working for the tribe, I've learned a lot of, um, potential avenues that the tribe could have had as far as business. But I've always looked for a strategy from every one of those places that I work. And not any of those places had a strategy to me getting educated here at Sintay and using my credentials to be able to move us forward. Mainly in, in the realm of behavioral health and treatment. And that was what, that's what I have my degree in is, uh, a dual masters in, in, um, human services. My bachelor's is in human services with a two-year minor in, um, addictions, illicit and illicit drugs. And, uh, my masters, my dual masters is, um, career, uh, school counseling and mental health. And so I've always wanted to know what are you guys gonna use me for? What are you gonna need my credentials for? So a big part of my, my upbringing and my life was always about finding my own healing, my own trauma. So they, there's a joke in psychology that they say, you become a psychologist because you're on a, you're on a journey to understand your own childhood. So you become a psychologist and then you become a psychiatrist, if that doesn't help, because you need something to deal with that trauma still, because it's there and it's alive and it's kicking, you know? And so those are kinda some of the things that I learned. But for me, I guess, um, looking at, and I was part of, um, working for O M D, which is kinda like the O M B for the government, but we have a little O M D office, which is part of the six thirty-eight contract, which kinda advises the administrations every year of what are some coming laws, like the SED document? And so I've always been here with past administrations and my husband Steve always says, they're gonna say, oh, here comes biz with that SED document again, let's hide, you know? Just try to make us read it, you know? Yeah, anyway. And I think I got one council rep to sit down and really read it, which was Brian Dillon, cause he was always here from eight to five. And he was like, yeah, all right, I'll read it, you know? And then he was like, wow, wow, you know? And so I had the, the, um, honor of, of being in, um, positions where I've worked with children. So I have seventeen years working with, in our programs that help children. And I've worked with one of the, um, programs, um, to get children to treatment. And so I saw how the path was created for the state and the federal system with Medicaid and Medicare, how all of our children had, had all nineteen. They all had insurance and still do to this day. So I always thought like, wow, we could just create our own treatment center here and we could bill Medicaid, Medicare, we could have our own treatment center here. And I even figured it out, gosh, if we had two cycles a year with ten kids, that's twenty kids, times costs like thirty thousand a year for forty-five days to, for an impatient child. That would be two hundred and eighty thousand revenue for the tribe. We could pay our staff, we could partner with IHS, I mean, all of these good things to bring revenue in for, for the tribe.
Okay.
And it hits, if you think about sovereignty, we think about, gosh, where could we purchase a piece of state land? And every time something comes up, I think, there's an opportunity, let's go. Tribe where Pat County gave up North Elementary, it's state land. So I thought, that could be a treatment center. We could put grants in there for now till they rebuild it, because grants allow you to fix buildings and they allow you to charge rent. And I thought, man, I just have this whole plan in my head. You know, I just wanna do these things, I'm just this visionary person, you know? But I don't say it because I haven't been there, I've been there, you know? And taking a lot of kids to treatment. While the state of South Dakota will take a child into treatment, but you have to take them to their assessment places because they will only pay their own state offices for those assessments and those assessments cost three hundred dollars an asses- assessment. The person who assesses just takes a test through the state, takes five classes, becomes a certified chemical dependency at level counselor, level three. She hires ten people to do those assessments, she signs off on them, they're just techs. She does all of the assessments for the state. They go to the treatment centers, those treatment centers take those kids in. I would take those kids to treatment. That's how I figured out, oh, I know what you guys are doing, you know? I figured this out, we could do this tribe, that's revenue. Our kids are being treated, they're being treated right here in our own, you know, families can go there for healing, you know? Anyway, so having said that, I've been part of Wellness Court. I've had the honor to work with Janelle, Sully, Virgil Hall, um, the one who really fought us, bless his soul, um, Dana Hannah. Because children have rights, you know, I will not put them under a microscope, no, no, no. So we developed this plan. You come to court, you commit a crime, we're gonna push your court date way back. We're gonna offer you a healing program. You take it. No, nope, nope. The next day, they were back in jail. Okay, Dana, he had to go through his own process. We had to convince him. So when we're making plans, when we're doing things for the people, don't learn how to not make it about you. Leave yourself at the door. This is about somebody else's well-being. Doesn't matter if it's treatment, drug court, it doesn't matter what it is. It's about that child. It's about our children. So having said that, I became a master gardener in my own grief and my own healing. I took two years off because I had death after death after death. Took two years off and I was like, okay, what am I going to do with myself? What am I going to do with all this brokenness, you know? So I started gardening, started growing my own food, you know? Pretty soon it was getting bigger and bigger and, you know, I was walking into a field of flowers and I was like, man, this is it, you know? And having that food sovereignty, sending my own kids to their store, you know, go make a bouquet of flowers. Steve knows. Go make a bouquet. He never came back. He's like, I can't decide which flowers to cut. But, you know, having those experiences, giving those experiences to my own children, giving that healing to my own children. When we created the Wellness Court, one of my kids, one of my boys was in Wellness Court. Thank God, you know, they were drug testing him, they were chasing him around. I mean, they were doing what I couldn't do as a woman and as a mother. And, you know, to this day, he's well, he's had treatment, you know? And so, you know, hearing about all of these places and all of these stories, I have, I've come to begin to lease land because I wanted this, man, I just want to grow food for everyone. I want it to be free. I want everyone to know what it's like to go pick flowers and make a bouquet. I want everyone to know what it's like to pick tomatoes and make your own sauce. You know, this is Sarah's sauce, this is Leah's sauce, come try it. You know, I just, I wanted that for everybody. So we started leasing land. I went to TLE and started going to shareholders meeting, bought a share, didn't know what I was doing, seen all these people come in and yeah, I was just scared because they were intimidating me and oh, I don't even know what I'm doing here, you know? It was a scary place. But I listened to people's concerns about the land, the land, the land. Having a million acres and talking about sovereignty, is that land really sovereign? It's not because we don't take it out of trust. The tribe hasn't purchased that land, probably from the government, gotten a title. Our people used to have a title when they first gave the tribe the land. And my dad said, when you came here, you could talk if you still had titled land. If not, sit down, you're dependent on the tribe. You can't talk, you have no say-so here anymore. You sold out. That's how it was here. So then I thought about that and my dad left me some land. It's still entitled status. And I'm like, oh my God. It feels so good to still have some land that is entitled status. Someplace, somebody has that title. We don't have it. The Bureau probably has it. So anyway, having said that, we really wanted to do a business going into the, talking about the economic development and strategy and where does my little flower farm fit into this business? Where does our leases fit into this? So leasing the land, understanding the agriculture because we have three hundred and twenty-eight acres here, one hundred and ten of it is ag. What do we do? Who do we find that's going to do that one hundred and ten acres of ag? I got on Facebook, I got on South Dakota Farm and Ranch, I started looking for people. You know, the first people we found, man, they lowballed us because we didn't know any idea of the cost of hay or alfalfa. And that we didn't know that there's weevils. Weevils are a big thing in alfalfa and I, you know, I really felt like, man, I'm really in over my head. I don't understand this. Who do I go to? So I went to SDSU and they said, hey, we have a master gardener class too. So, okay, I'll do that too. So I took on the master gardener and through that I became a resource. They opened that door for me to SDSU and all their resources. So I became that person to, you can come and ask me any question. I can get you to the people who can answer it for you. Weevils, okay, I'll get you to that person. So I became that open door resource to any question, any ag question that you might have, this person can come and help you. If I can't do it, they can. We need resources, we need doors that, that can become open for our people living here because we get stuck and I got stuck many, many times in this process of leasing land, understanding it, the soil, you know, I do soil tests at my house, in my own yard, you know, understanding how to redo, I have some places where I till and I'm moving more to not tilling. You know, so what I started doing is bringing in the buffalo manure. I work with Boys and Girls Club and we got buffalo manure to all of their gardens. They're ready for the spring to plant. We have systems now that just give the curriculum to the teacher of your beds are ready. Here's your curriculum. Go grow your own food. It's like, what are we going to do with all that food? I was like, that's totally up to you. So I think that in, in speaking about all of that, telling you who I am, where I came from, what I do and, and now, right now, in real time, I am a victim specialist for the Rosewood Sioux Tribe and I do sexual assaults, child neglect and child abuse for our tribe. So I know all of our victims. I know Sorna, how many people we have, how many people where they are. I have all of that information. And we talk about laws and we talk about anything. We could be talking about anything. But when it came to Redco and this arm that the tribe created, I don't agree with any grants being done at Redco. For this reason, when I brought up my little flower farm or I brought up my vegetable farm, it was initially a vegetable farm until I saw that Redco started getting all of the grants that I was going to apply for. Then I started understanding that I'm going to be competing with my tribe and that my tribe has become a monopolizer to us as entrepreneurs. And they're just like stepping all over us because they're so big, they have so much money and they can just step all over us. They got their own EIN number and I don't agree with that. And I'm here to say that unless the tribe removes that from that economic development arm, you are not going to be able to develop anything here because I am the proof of that barrier today. Because I cannot move forward with a loan, with a grant and I'm competing with the tribe, I'm competing with your economic development arm. So I kind of found a way around it and in understanding that and speaking my truth and I don't know if I should say this because if any funds come up, man, they're not going to think of me because I speak some truth. And so what I did was I did a partnership with them. And I saw that even though they got these grants, they don't know how to grow seedlings. So I was like, okay, I found a way, you know, I'm going to push through this barrier. We've built a greenhouse and man, I learned how to soil block in a little tray like this, I got five hundred and eighty green pepper plants on it. That little piece, five hundred and eighty, that takes one little light and one little heating pad. And all I have to do is fertilize them. They can stay in that little quarter inch soil block until they're about this big, until they're ready to go to the ground. And I thought, man, I need to start patting my own self on the back because, man, we're really hard on ourselves, you know? The things other people say about us, the things other people do to us. We need to remember to give ourselves that pat on the back, you know, when we, when we accomplish, when we meet these goals. So anyway, having said that, I started learning about the land and the bigger picture and came into the same thing. Went to TLE, man, they had all of these signs of, if you need a tractor, if you need all of this. I was like, man, I need all of this. So we got a lease and got the lease and went, took me three years before I figured out that I needed an ag banker. So then I went to, we went to the bank and sat there like two little Indians, didn't know what we were doing, got with an ag banker and, and TLE changed their format. And so I was like, man, I just really don't understand this. Went to the bank and we got everything that we needed through the ag banker. And everything, the checks, everything were all done through the ag banker to give us the loan because we had a lease. We needed the money for the lease. Because none of us have twenty thousand sitting around, but ag bankers do. And surprisingly, they don't even really look at your credit history because they know you have a lease. They know it's about land. There must be something about land and ag where they know money's coming in. So, you know, we learned that, we got an ag banker. So now we turned around and we were like, okay, this is how much this is worth, this is how much hay this is coming off of. Now, now we're going to be getting lease money. But what we were missing was now we needed to move to that stage of, we want hundred percent of what's coming off of that land to be all solely come to us as natives. So that means I need a tractor, I need a baler and we need a rake. So we go to, there's Lakota Funds, there's all of these places, Mazaska should be Redco or Sichangu Co. To help me develop those business plans. So then I was thinking about it and I thought, you know what? TLE, if they're going to give you a lease, they should require that when they give you a lease, all of these people are coming to the table for you. And before you walk into that door, you're going to have a plan. And within that five years, you're going to be successful. Every one of our members of this tribe should be able to have that opportunity. How can we push ourselves forward a little bit more? And so my wish for the tribe and me as an entrepreneur is that Redco get away from the grants. They work with our entrepreneurs and help them be able to be as, wherever their, their goal is, their plan, their business plan, that everybody surrounding them to be successful. Grow their own food, man their own fields, whatever it is. So some of the things that I have in my plan for my, for my, our hay and our alfalfa is to be a hundred percent. We do it ourselves. And at that point, I will turn around and offer it back to tribal members because we have our own tribal members who want hay, they want alfalfa. Even if you have four horses, we have payroll deductions. We have the vehicles here, we have everything that we need. But we need Redco to step up and come to the table with entrepreneurs. It doesn't matter what is written in here as long as Redco comes to the table for every one of these people that come forward with the plan.
I've got a question. Does Redco sign for the business? They don't sign off on nothing, no, they don't? But they funded?
No, not necessarily. You could probably go to any of the Mazaska, Lakota Funds, anywhere where they're funding business loans.
So where does Redco have to be located?
I think they're working on that business loan part, but I don't know if they're fully funded at what the other places are.
Tatanka Funds is an entity on the reservation. It's a sister company to Redco. It's not necessarily an entity of Redco. And it's a community financial development institution. And right now, I do know, because I sit on the board, that they have RDBG funds that are for small business incubators up to five thousand dollars.
They used to have cat parks, media action programs. Did you have a little?
No, I don't remember.
They built farms, they built farms and ranches. None of them planned out. People that started, took the money and gave it to a point. So business plans, you know, they all sign off on the case. As the contract, you have to sign off. Anybody who signs off on a contract, obligated to that contract. If you have Redco signs on there, then you're obligated to that. But if they don't, they're not. If she's right, yeah, you got to get them to sign on it.
I do have one more comment as a solution for what Redco was intended for and Sheri knows this because we started working on it in the early stages of it with bringing in Jim White. It was the pooling that figure out, we have budgets, we have Health and Human Services budget, we have the six thirty-eight contract budget and we have general account budget. We also have the property and supply manual of the tribe. So all of those documents are like this, it's a plan. There's already plans in place. And I think, remember, we started on, trying to just start on one, one line item with this supplies. And according to A eighty-seven, supply line item says they're that one-time use. So we were just going to try taking that one supply line item for the tribe and take, giving it to Redco at the beginning of their fiscal year. And Redco was going to buy in bulk and I think we were going to start with toilet paper, paper towels and cleaning products.
And paper.
And paper. And we were going to capitalize on the reservation. And then we were going to move to different reservations and capitalize on different reservations because they don't have a business arm like Redco does. So I guess I don't know whatever happened to that plan and really capitalizing on that business product side of it. And that the property and supply would come in and they would know exactly what we needed to purchase. So Redco wouldn't have to go to the directors for the programs. They would go right to property and supply like a government to government kind of thing. And I guess I don't know where we got lost in trying to, because to me that is real business. And I think we got away from that and I hope that we get back on track to doing that. I think it would be really good. But thank you guys for listening to me.
Thank you. Jamie, does anybody else on the floor too? If you do, just raise your hand and order people who raised all the knowledge.
Hi, I'm Jamie Forni. I just have a few things, when it says what other goals we want to include here, is that open to everybody? Is it here? Okay.
Yes.
Um, so tribal codes, you don't really have any? Could we start implementing our own tribal codes like National Electrical, building codes, you know, structural codes, if we could get those? So some, when they build something here, it's actually set to a code and not just put up willy-nilly and falls down ten years later, you know? I think we really need codes. And if we could add like land re-regularization because a lot of our lands are either overgrazed or over, overplanted, you know? So start implementing something on those. I know there's lots of things we can do to help the land and we're supposed to be, you know, guardians of the land almost, you know, we're supposed to be caretakers of the land and instead of doing that, we've just, and just taken advantage of the land, you know? Just because it's there and I don't fight back. Well, unless you get giggers or stuff. And then. And then, I know we have the fifty land, or fifty homes coming up. But if we're gonna do workforce development, we're gonna start bringing in people in to help us build structures. We're gonna need temporary housing too. So they're not just sitting around and all are. Outland, you know, oh, out border, border towns. Border towns, you know, instead of them staying there, they can stay here some. I think that would be something that would be really good to have in a, a five-year economic development plan. And then, um. If we could look into maybe becoming a, I, I don't know if this is feasible, but like a distribution hub. Cause I don't know if we have to be subject to the tariffs that the United States of America has to be. You know, so they implement all the tariffs. If, if they're getting shipped here. Could be bypassless tariffs from other countries and be a distribution hub at least to other reservations. So those are just things I was just jotting down real quick and thinking that we need. We need a lot and we can have a lot happen, uh, but it should be in here. So they say, well, where is that in your economic development plan? Where's that at? So if we could add those in there, it's like, okay, it's right here, you know, so highlight it and put it in there. Other than that, it looks really good. Like, good, good job.
Wonderful additions, I appreciate those. Um, I do know that we've been working on building codes for a long time. Um, they just, I don't know what the holdup is, I'll have to check in on that, but I think those would be really good additions, cause.
Yeah, like a, cause we're gonna need it for our, um. Resco and our tribal utility, we should have, you know, electric codes for us to go off of here and different ones.
Good job. What was yours?
You're supposed to kick me out. There is a resource for the codes through one of the prizes that we won. Can get technical support around, um, implementing building codes and stuff. So that's a resource that could be, I don't know, either called out or something. Um, the other thing I was thinking is that housing, if you think hotel-like housing, then it could coordinate with, um.
Like miniature, no miniature, private housing or?
Well, you know, like, I'm thinking like more along, um, like T V type options where they can do T P stays or something. So that would tie in with the last type with the entrepreneurship. So we're gonna, we have people, um, at the S D and T level with the expertise in these areas that can come and provide training. To our tribal members on how to establish these types of businesses, how to price them, how to market them. And then basically, you know, have visitors coming and staying and generating an income for your own home. And I do know that I think there was even a thing with the hot zones or tribal. That they could conduct cottage industry businesses and I think an Airbnb kind of thing does classify as that. So I mean, you know, there's a lot of different options. Um, I know we really need a new hotel, but. I'd go for our lowest hanging fruit like Michael was talking about and we do have a lot of interested, um, tribal members who do own T Ps and who are. Asking questions about T P stays and these kinds of things, so.
Somebody told me that you couldn't have, uh, like a RV park or a, um. A tent. Where do you put, where do you call those places you stay when you're driving around?
Campsite.
Okay, I'm sorry, that, that the only, um, only.
It's Goldtop Park.
Is it Goldtop Park, is that true?
Um, in our current land, our current law and order code, that's the only legal place a non-Indian can camp on our reservation.
Okay. But if they're packing through somebody, does that still count?
Theoretically. We, we've learned. Trouble with that enforcement in Rosebud, but yes.
Oh, that's funny. Um, what about, um, doesn't the casino have campsites?
They have a RV park over there.
Is that part of the hotel though?
Yeah, they actually have to go in there to get free wifi and I know that like they had planted some. Scenery landscaping stuff, so it's starting to grow. If you look, it's starting to take hold a little bit. I hope it starts to look beautiful out there at some point. Um, yeah, they do have one and they get wifi and you see the pool and things like.
So if somebody wanted to do that, do the T P, you know, Airbnb have to be on their own land or how would they get around that?
Yeah, they're saying that they were leasing the land, but then there's other issues that, um, have come to light. With revol- um, involving like NIPA requirements and things like that, that, um, the I U is kind of really. Um, being strong on and we thought we could come up with some tribal, um, solutions to that, but it's kind of been. Um, hasn't gone anywhere. But there are some NIPA requirements, so like if somebody wanted to do that, essentially that's a fifteen thousand dollar expense to that.
Have a NIPA.
So I mean, those are some of the other barriers and challenges that we have to look at overcoming with some of these. Entrepreneurial activities that our people are interested in. So I mean, those are some, there are some significant barriers in a way, um, with our current land, our current law and order code and, and with, um, NIPA requirements.
This Airbnb, that's those fifteen houses?
No.
No.
The fifty houses are nice.
Airbnbs, let's say somebody had a, um, transitional house that they renovated and they weren't living in it.
Oh, yeah.
They can rent that out to visitors, um, like a hotel. And they don't get taxed, the state of South Dakota doesn't tax those types of businesses because they're in residential areas and there's laws against taxing. I mean, they're taxed at a certain level, but not the, they can't charge them the bed tax and all these other types of taxes, tourism tax. I think they don't pay that, um, because they're in residential areas.
Uh, what's that guy's name that has one of these cabins on my river?
Charlie Moll.
Yeah. He's got cabins that he's got that he do. Uh, why couldn't they do that for a certain part, you know?
They could. I even think the communities could be empowered to develop something like that in each community. Whether it's taking their little, their community house, their little trailer COVID, COVID trailers that they got. And leasing those out for revenue as Airbnb units. You know, I don't know if any of us have ever thought about that, but I was always wondering, I wonder if they think about.
You ever been to, uh, uh, Little Big Horn? Remember that place off the scene, like Little Big Horn, it's got TP. On platforms, they made a platform, they put TP, they ran it, you see them moving out.
Lester has some really good ones too, some cool T P campgrounds over there.
Yeah.
I'm gonna interrupt, I'm sorry, John wasn't finished, so.
Oh, no, 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 um, so, all right, first. I think almost everybody here knows me, um, but I also have a weird background. So I have a management consultant background, a couple decades of that, I'm an engineer. You know me mostly energy, but I have these other, um, aspects. One of the things that we got feedback on, on the grants that we won. That helped us score higher was, uh, the idea of integrating across organizational boundaries. Both EPA like that and Department of Interior like that. And they, the feedback was that helped our grant application score higher. The other thing that we didn't necessarily get feedback on, but I feel like we tried to integrate. Um, and this is coming from a management consulting background, so. Um, when you're looking at an organization, um, it all goes back to culture. So I am not an expert on Lakota culture. But I've taken time to try to understand parts of it. I think some of that needs to be integrated into this plan more. And as an example, um, you have a goal for full employment. That's a goal, but if we go after funding for workforce development. It would be much stronger if we could build out that goal is full employment. How we wanna get there is through a workforce development center that integrates intergenerational trauma healing. And, uh, G E D support and basic life skill support to, you know, get those. Into more detail so that you are pulling in the story of what are, what is holding your people back?
Oh, I was gonna say, uh, employment.
I'm sorry, I, I don't wanna be rude, but I just want like John to continue to finish and then you can ask your questions when he's done.
Um, okay, but that, that full employment, we, you need certain talent, so you either need to make it or bring it back. And an example is an electrician. It would take us five years to make a new electrician. So we may have to go to people who moved away and try to recruit them back. Not only as an electrician, but then to take on an apprentice so that we can build that capability back locally. Um, and then you have to reintegrate people coming back from incarceration. That could be integrated as part of that workforce development, um, and the healing process of that. And then ultimately, if we're making these workers, somehow we need to build and support businesses. Instead of one guy that does electric, we need an electrician company that employs five, six people. And that can adapt to the demands and the crises that happen during storms and things like that. A business can do that, an individual can't have the same impact. So I think some of those concepts should be built into this.
Especially the shared resources, like sharing an accounting office.
Yes, so the back office business support, health businesses actually stand up tax support. The, I was in a small business, yeah, thirty-five years ago, vice president. And it was way easier than it is today. I mean, the ten ninety-nine forms, the quarterly reporting, the insurance requirement, there are, it's. It's just overwhelming and when you're trying to actually run a business, so that, that type of support. My understanding of the intergenerational trauma comes actually from Sichanguko and the research by Maria Yalavos Braithorne. That is Lakota research about Lakota issues and solving and healing Lakota people. That is a strong story. And really, I think, should be integrated into the whole workforce development. The other things that I think could be expanded on are, uh. The Lakota had an economy, uh, how I've understood it, it was more of a gifting economy. Whereas the western economy is more money-based. Is there a way in building your economy that you can bring back some of the gifting concept? And use the white rules against it? So that might be your own currency of, of a gifting arrangement, but that can allow like a nonprofit to, um. Really instill economic activity, not just with cash or dollars, but with a Lakota currency of gifting. Recycling, reforestation, uh, your geothermal resources. Standing up, making sure T F I gets certified, uh, energy resiliency, not just clean energy, but protecting the people with energy resiliency. I just protecting Wunchumaka, you know, with energy. It's not just about reducing the climate, it's about, we wanna protect the earth. Make this more Lakota, um, in the goals and tell them that's what you wanna do. Now, the risk in that is that the last administration would have eaten that up. This administration, who knows? The emphasis on wind in here, this administration will not like. Um, they, he's been very vocal about that. So you may wanna make that more generic. Uh, because you do have very strong geothermal resource from an energy perspective, uh, that can be. I think developed in a culturally aligned way. Um, it can also be done in a very ant, culturally antagonistic way. Uh, meaning it, it can be very exploitive, but I don't think it has to be. I think I've talked.
I was gonna share that same sentiment as John, as far as the priorities and the document. That I felt like they needed to be reconsidered just based on this administration's current priorities. Especially since it's a five-year term, right? And so we know these next four years, we're probably not gonna get any energy funding. Um, I don't know about the availability and those types of things and.
Geo, they're actually behind geothermal, so geothermal might be very attractive to this administration.
John would know the, I, all the backend of that stuff, but I had those same concerns, especially because. They were higher up on the priority list and I feel like they should be booked down now just based off this, um. President's priorities, this administration. That was one of my only concerns about what she had in the, as your priorities.
Yeah, appreciate that. I'll just, I'll share, Sarah, with that sentiment. The long version of the analysis, the hundred and twenty-page analysis by P I P has. The results of solar and, uh, where that scored and geothermal as well. And there, it isn't as sunny here, like it isn't in Southwest as much compared that way, so it didn't rank, it's not as reliable as wind. The geothermal, there was discussion in that plan about, uh, what, uh, Mr. Bob was talking about. Up there in Millecc County, so that's there. Um, but, but clearly, yeah, I've, I've read the memos that came on day one from the president regarding wind, especially the offshore. Uh, the onshore stuff this way, anywhere in mainland U S, there has to be a review of it. But, uh, those, but yeah, with, with what you've just shared, it's, uh, very much a concern and the good thing is, this is a draft. And so we can make changes as such. Uh, the project itself, although there was a, a timeline going eighteen months out. When you talk about realistically trying to market energy, wind energy on the queue, uh, to Southern Power, um, the pool. Where they would buy it and then get it out to other markets, you're talking about four to five years from now. So, uh, there, there's aspects to that that are not within, that are in the longer part of the plan, but only more recently in the last. I'd say two to three months have come out. There, there's more movement, but there again, you're right, your points won't take you with this administration, you know, it's. Even just, uh, a- anything with wind is, is probably, based on those memos that have been put out by the administration, may not have the. Immediate support without some sort of further, uh, explanation or analysis, so. Uh, but yeah, that's gonna need to be looked at again by the committee and all of us and say, hey, what should we prioritize on?
Then I had another question, Michael, on, on these strategies for strategy two. Um, how many tribal members work for the Rosebud Construction? And because of, I mean, I'm just trying to understand like how many actual tribal members are working from here? And are being deployed out for work in Rapid City.
I don't, yeah, I don't even have the updated numbers. It seemed as though with all the, uh, all this, like. The issue surrounding the daycare, that was a lack of people. There was also an HVAC issue. And Clay would know best, but I'm glad you asked that because even though it's. The, the strategy focuses on the capturing of markets in Pennington County, you know, in three to five years. Where are those people gonna come from, you know, but also what about if, if people here need work, then how do you accommodate that? There's already been discussions around, well, could, could we do the training here of people who need jobs in the industry? There's not enough work here over time, but could they be relocated in a setting where you had temporary housing? You know, and it would, it would be a heavy lift, so I've had discussions with our learning and development director. Uh, around that specific pillar and all the challenges, where are they gonna get the education? Can S G U handle that? Do we, we need to pull in the vote tech schools, the eight, the nine-month, eighteen-month certificates? There's a whole lot of, what, the, the thing with R C I, it's the workforce, where are they coming from? Are they ready? Because even look at the homes being built locally now, even within O H D C, is that adequate enough, even just for residential?
Code, they passing code kind of thing?
Yeah, so it, that, those are valid points. That's still need a lot further in-depth analysis as to what that actually looks like when it's implemented.
I feel like with the, um, added input that you guys received today. Um, that these strategies definitely need to be reorganized. Um, I feel like focusing on, like you said, the low-hanging fruit, things that we can accomplish in five years. You know, so I know, um, tourism could be in this. Uh, maybe not towards the top, but we do have resources coming into the tribe. Where we're going to be able to get a good jump on some of these and now when you're revising your plan in five years, you're, we're checking things off. We've done this, we've done this, we've accomplished this.
Sure.
You know, um, that's technically how a plan's supposed to work, you know, you. You know, um, that's technically how a plan's supposed to work, you know, you work through it and, and check things off and then revise it and add as we go. Um, but I, I do, and I see like your, um, cultural stuff, all the cultural things. This tourism ties into everything, the revitalization, the economic opportunity, I mean, the language immersion, all this stuff. Um, because the goal of cultural heritage tourism is to revitalize and preserve indigenous cultures across, across the United States and while sharing our beautiful history and resiliency with everybody else who's been wanting to know about us forever, you know? But, you know, and it's really up to us now to share those stories, um, in the light we want to share it in and dispel all of these stereotypes and wrong stories about us that are in history books, everything. So I mean, it's really, and to be honest, like when I got involved with tourism, I, I thought it was Lakota. You know, and then when I started to really look at everything, I started to realize that our educational system here failed me as a Lakota. I didn't know my language, I didn't know even the true history behind Spotted Tail. I didn't know none of this stuff until I got involved with this tourism. And so that kind of got me revitalized my interest in relearning our culture. You know, and I, I said, if it can do that for me in my fifties, I wonder what that can do for some younger people. You know, just starting to learn a little bit, becoming more intrigued and more engaged and wanting to share that with everybody else. So I just think it's an excellent opportunity to tie all of these things together. Um, you know, when you talk about Biz's agriculture, I think she could be an excellent lead for agritourism person in, on this reservation. She can do garden tours out to her property, you know, she can make money. There's, there's all kinds of things out there. I just think, you know, they just, we didn't have that prioritization and realize that some of these things are really like this, you know, like.
They're leaked.
Yeah, they are, they all are, they truly are. And it's just putting that in a way to where I feel like we should just focus on things that we're gonna be able to accomplish and then have those long-term goals coming in behind. But like prioritize it in a way where the top things, we're gonna accomplish within this five years. We're gonna get, get these done. And I feel like, um, we're in a, in a place right now with some incoming resources, depending on this freeze theme, uh, on really making some, um, critical movement within the grassroots of our reservation. You know, because a lot of the work that we have coming out on this summer will be grassroots level work, working within these communities to determine their needs and their wants and their desires and ways that we can help them, you know? And so, um, it's all coming. And I just want to make sure because I know in the past I have, um, applied for EDA funding. And because tourism was not in the SEDS plan, our application was tossed out. And so I want to really ensure that, um, those types of activities are included in here because I do plan on seeking EDA funding. And I do share the same sentiment as Biz as far as Redco competing with the tribe for critical funding. There are some of the initiatives that we were working on, but found out Redco was funded under. And so that's when I reached out to Clay and everybody and told them, well, there's a process. You guys are supposed to get a resolution. Contact our office first to make sure you are not competing with the tribe for these dollars. You know, and so we started to work that out and now they're, they're getting better at that. But there is a competition, um, between the tribe and Redco for some of these, um, very minimal resources that are out there for, you know, these pots of money. Um, but we do have some, and we're all always struggling right, right alongside each other. I'm like, we need to be doing this together. We can't be doing the same thing side by side, um, with what little resources are available to us, you know? So we really have to be partnering really strongly, um, and making sure that these, these initiatives come to fruition, that our people see actual results, you know, um. I mean, to me, it's important, especially if I'm out there, I've made promises to our community members that I will make things happen. It's gonna take some time, but I will do my best to make things happen, to help them lift up their small business ideas. You know, to help them in those kinds of ways, building their own capacity to be able to run their own businesses. You know, so those are some of the things that I'm interested in helping, um, and, yeah.
No, all your, you made, all the points you just brought up, they're all, all valid. And, you know, there's like a few things I can comment on. Uh, the first one regarding tourism, it's the second biggest industry in the state, right behind Ag. You know, and you always hear people wanting, out of state, wanting to go to the Black Hills to see native, uh, sponsored or related, uh, sites and events and activities. Yeah, we're down here, you know, and we're not often up there. And you get the subpar trinkets that Indians are up, you know, maybe sell, they're trying to pawn off as uh, original Native American-owned arts and crafts, it may not be at all. It may be made in China, you know, that people get up in the hills during the summer months and, yeah.
They are.
And, and so there's that. The, the second thing would be regarding, um, so first of all, they'll just say that, yes, that needs, but I'm glad you're on, you're here. And I think it'll help move things along so you can keep that, those promises to the communities in this document be more useful and, and actually used properly is to keep coordinating our, our meetings like this. Keep, to keep continual conversation to, you know, with that, with the SEDS committee itself. Maybe it does need to be expanded just a little bit beyond the, the Economic Development Committee itself. Uh, because that's off, that was often a thing I've seen with the prior plans in the years past. They had a hard time getting people just to show up, it seemed, and Ken might remember that. Where you didn't, you don't have a strong business community here anyway, so it's really tough. You're not gonna see Bowie show up for our SEDS meetings or be a member in the committee. But, you know, we have to, so it's always like government entities. Well, until we have a full, fully developed economy, that's what it's gonna be. But for those like you who've actually taken the time and developed and have a plan for tourism and get recognized by, you know, important partners like the, you know, the state G O D office to do it, that's critical. You have to be a part of this. You have to, you know, be able to make sure that what, that that document is reflective of not only what we want to do, but that it ultimately gets the resources to do it. You know, and if it's in there and council knows it, the committee knows it, you know, now all of a sudden, EDA's gonna know it. You know, it, it is that important to have it. Uh, third thing would be, you know, the competition piece. I told Clay and I mentioned to our, some of the managers, including the CDC side of, of Sichagui CDC, that, uh, their, and our PR people, that we need a more active PR presence here at this building, with this department, with this tribe because of the lack of communication. I mean, you watch a council meeting and when Redco comes up, jeez, oh my gosh. You know, and simple communication, you know, would, would, even in advance, would alleviate uh, uh, something from becoming a one- to two-hour issue on this floor. And so I was pretty strifed, I told him, I said, we, you know, for all the resources we have, we better spend, get, get some appropriated for just a PR person who does nothing but talk and go around and communicate with the tribe, not just council reps or committee members or the president, but department heads, you, Ken, Sarah, everybody, because especially on the grant side. You know, it's that lack of communication that causes a lot of problems, you know, between the entities and this animosity. And you start talking about chartered, you know, dissolution or suspension, oh my goodness, jeez, it get that bad? You know, we've got other fires to deal with now, but, you know, there again, and so some of the board members for Redco were like, yeah, that has to be dealt with because that's not, that's a, that's, that's a waste of everyone's time to have to deal with that. So, you know, what you brought up is, is critical and I've raised those issues, especially on the part where, you know, people are competing, they'll call me up, is, or do you know someone at the tribe's applying for this? Well, no, I don't. I said, it's gonna take, I can send off an email, you know, to Ken and find out. But, you know, it's, it's, you know, the deadline's a week away. Now you're asking me? You know, and did you know you're supposed to, yeah. And if you're gonna serve the tribe, you know, you gotta get a resolution, right? Well, we didn't need it, we can get from the board, you know, or, uh, you know, if you're dealing with, um, health issues, you better go approach the IRB board now, you know, because you're dealing with someone's health data. So the, the last-minute stuff, I've often told the, 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 the resource development part of Redco to be very cognizant of, of those issues and, and, and get out there early. Don't wait till the last minute to try to, you know, otherwise you are, they probably already have a resolution to apply for something within the tribe. And now here you guys are, you're trying to do the same thing. And then again, it causes that animosity and you don't know it until it actually starts, you know? And, well, at any rate, but, but those are all valid points and I'm just glad that, um, we're, we're, we're going through this and, uh, this is the first draft in that we can make the changes necessary for it, get it to a point where we all agree with it and then move forward with it.
Okay. Yep, go ahead, you have the floor. Um, we're over time by ten minutes, but we will sit and listen to your comment and.
Okay, this is, uh, this is, this is Community Development, right?
Economic Development. Yeah, do you have a copy of the plan, sir?
Uh, no, I'm happy, I just heard it on the radio, that's what.
I'm glad you came. That, so that's one part of it, that's the, it's just a draft.
Good.
Okay, and then here are the other parts that, um, that S R D worked on, that's one of our tribal programs. Um, it takes some time to, go ahead and.
What, what I want to say was, uh, yeah, on employers, on planning electricians and all this.
The workforce development?
Yeah, well, one place that, uh, the B O P, Bureau of Prisons, they have a lot of members here in prison. And when they, they get training in there, like HVAC and all that stuff, electrician, they get training in there. And when they come up, they can't get them, you know, because they're felons outside of hire. There are tribal members. Why don't you give them an opportunity, you know, employ them, ask them what, what all they know? And they're pretty much up on it because that's all they do in it. And another thing is, uh, Community Development. A while back, you can ask Hawkins about this, but a while back, it started this log cabin program for homeless. At that time, they said, oh, we don't need homeless, log cabin. And I talked to, uh, Hood and all them at that time and argued, uh, argued with them. Went to their meeting, argued with them, said, we need this because there's a veteran approaching this in his car. He didn't have no place to go. I didn't want to see that no more, so I argued hard with this council and, but, you know, I had that built. They said, we tend to use the local old wood because it's inferior, you know? There's a red log building here that's a hundred years old. Your housing, it's all dilapidated and long away now, and that one's still standing. So how is it inferior? So they finally agreed to this and we built that log cabin homeless project.
The one that harsh-housed it?
Oh, right up here, the log cabin.
The homeless shelter? Oh, the homeless shelter, okay.
And I, and the plan at that time was to build one in every community. And I got funding from Hood and I got funding from the, whatever you call the, the.
Veterans first?
Veterans, yeah. And there was enough to, 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 and I started it up and one of the ideas was, we have, uh, Sichagui, I mean, the S W A. Not S W A, but I.
A sweet tea.
You take it, I'll call it, their workers up there, do some work, have credit time, and build them. And so we have competition between the other people on how, this was, uh, that was the plan. But Ken and, uh, what's the name of the man, Chris?
Ken?
They got a hold of Carol and, uh, she helped me. They got a hold of me, they tried to get it to him. So they used up all the funding, and those members, but just that. I initiated all that and I got it all together. And I want to keep continuing to, to build something in every community, let's meet it.
It is.
Look, I'm up there now, but it's constant. I mean, every other night, there's somebody knocking, you know, I need a place to sleep, I've gone freezing. You know, a lot of people.
Underwork, worst development.
A lot of people got their own housing and a lot of places to stay. Even if it was a teepee that was mine, that would be good enough. They, they're giving that. And S W A is willing to allow, uh, X challenge to rent the S W A. So, we're just having code. Yeah.
Well, Ken, how about a sweet house?
No, not for ten years.
Oh, for ten years?
Ten years, definitely, yeah.
So maybe, um, you know what, too? One thing that I was really wanting to, and I didn't know if it belongs here or not, sorry to interrupt you, but like, um, sent you an email on it too, is, um, uh, we, we talked about like, uh, I hate to call them a halfway house, but we remember, a transitional living center?
Yes.
Transitional housing?
Yes. Maybe we should, I'll jot that down, that we include that in there.
There are some funds available for transition housing and C T A, but you have to undergo a twelve-month B J A-approved planning process.
Okay.
So there's a four million dollars available under the coordinated tribal assistance solicitation. That's, it closes in March and we already submitted our resolution for three, three purpose areas. But, um, it's tribal, um, justice infrastructure. And they fund like, um, women shelters, transitional living centers, um, repairs to, um, corrective facilities, um, those types of things. Um, but we've never been able to initiate a B J A-approved planning process because they have never, um, relayed that. I've asked repeatedly, what is the B J A-approved planning process then? So I've even gone to B I A, what is this planning process they're talking about? I've asked the grant officers and nobody has ever given me a document or anything that outlines the planning process for a B J A-approved planning process. I've never received one. And we did apply one year for, um, an expansion project to what Buffalo CAF Women's Society to include, um, family housing, family shelters, um, but must not have been a B J A-approved planning process because we didn't get, didn't get funded, but there is funding available. And, um, I've been trying to work with those program officers to find that salute. What is that planning process? Because to me, I think that's the only reason why we're not getting funded, I don't know, um.
You should email that to me, please.
There's a place in Rapid called G O, G O. They're a halfway house where it's a, they need to get out and they have to integrate back into the society. But you can get rules and, you know, where they do their, their stuff, which is required. And here, you have the power to make our own laws, we can cut that in half, which is required.
Yeah, I agree with that.
They'll, uh, help us.
And that's a halfway house, you said?
Yeah.
Um, Sarah and Mike, do you think that we should, do you recommend that for the economic development? Be, post a second hearing or, um, is there?
I think a second hearing after the first, after he revises it, right, has her?
So I think once it's revised, we should probably go over and make sure that nothing's missed. But make sure that it's fluid enough to where nothing's like duplicative on it. And in that, at some point, like with any project, you do a time, scope and budget. When we talk about scope, who's gonna do it? Because I think that was one of the things that, again, like with the last SEDS, that wasn't accomplished, was anything tourism. And there was no specifics in that, even though you were working on things and regulated, winning awards for doing great work in the field, there was like no connectivity. And maybe that was because when it was done at the time, that there was, you know, you may not have been even working on some of that stuff five years prior. But I, I think that speaks to the whole process on how it shouldn't just be done once every five years and forgotten about, even after this is done. There should be some method by which people get together, even if not quarterly or some, I mean, and say, how far along are we on this? Without changing it or, you know, gutting it, starting over, because you can't do that. But actually being able to make sure that, that things are being done, because that never happened.
Exactly. Well, just making sure that if we say we have a number of goals and objectives that everybody took the time to say that are important, that they're actually getting done. Yeah. That there's time for it, there's this budget, there's scope, there's another task that are clearly defined that can be accomplished because there's, we, even though we don't have the people or money, maybe we move along that during the five years.
So maybe we develop a concurrent timeline to go with this plan, um, that goes alongside and develop and identifies who's responsible for what. Once the plan gets approved, then develop a timeline for it that the tribe can get behind and allow us, you know? Like for me, it's like my time, like I can't spend a lot of time on tourism.
See, and that's just it.
I do other things.
You're right, and, and that's the thing, is we all have our other day jobs. And that was the other thing that we have to talk about is how do we make sure this thing actually has somebody to do all the legwork to go around and not have to do it in their spare time, the way it's been done now, you know, and so there.
So is that what the SEDS coordinator position could possibly do if they revised your job description?
Well, see, I, I'm, I'm no longer even EDA-funded, I'm not with anything. There is not, and that's the thing we have to talk about with the money, that grant that we have.
I'll take this one, I'm just teasing.
That's just that somebody has to do something.
To say, what did we just say? No, I said that word because I know.
I know I said that word, because I know it's a bad word now, supplement.
If you got a workforce that were ex-solvents, you get a five-thousand-dollar incentive to hire them. You know that? There's a program to, you get paid to hire them.
Wow, that's good.
You must have emailed that program.
Uh, you have to contact, uh, Department of Prisons to find that out.
Okay.
But there's money in it.
Money to hire alums, right?
Yeah.
Okay, well, with that, I'm gonna call this session to close and I appreciate you guys' time and, um, all of the, all of the feedback from the community. Thank you for coming and I thank the programs for helping. I appreciate all the work that you did to make today happen.
Wait, you did that for this morning?
You probably have a position paper.
I was all worried about it this morning.